All right, Suk Yukiat, welcome. Good day. Good to have everybody here tonight. We've got a full contingent of staff and welcome to everybody watching us on our YouTube channel. We have we have a what I would call an epic agenda again tonight. So for those interested in the baseball game, it's highly unlikely that we're going to be finished in time to catch the last inning or two. But that's why we have Jay's and 30, which I'm sure we can catch a little bit later tonight. The agenda tonight includes seven items on the the in camera agenda. Speaking of epic, so we may, we may, depending on how long the regular meeting takes, we may take a short break between regular and in camera, just so everybody can kind of recharge. Okay, with that, let's get to it. Maurice, do we have the addition of any items tonight?
There is no late item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none. Could I have a mover to adopt? Counselor McGuire, thank you. And Counselor McBane, thank you. All those in favor. That motion is carried. Next up, we have adoption of the council and committee meeting minutes, specifically the minutes of the regular meeting of council on October the 14th. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Karen's moves and Counselor Dunneback seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, first up tonight for we have a bylaw for first, second, and third reading, and it is the five-year financial plan bylaw. Amendment number two for 2025. Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, Counselor McGuire and Counselor Karen seconds. Krista.
Thank you, Mayor.
Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor McCormick. Yes, this financial plan amendment incorporates council resolutions held at previous meetings, which include new expenditures that we need to include in the five-year financial plan. Those items include an organizational review and the amount of $25,000 to identify gaps in the workforce. A $30,000 increase to community grant to the community grant allocations for the 2026 fiscal year. And it also incorporates the anticipated increase to the Kimberly Ave reconstruction project of 2.87 million dollars, and that's anticipated to be incurred in 2026. As for the staff report brought previously, it is staff are have applied for grant for this increase, but due to the substantial amount, we wanted to incorporate this into the current financial plan now so that it's formally allocated. And then the final item is just a housekeeping item where it was an ongoing project from 2024 that had unspent funds, but was erroneously excluded from the five-year that five-year financial plan. So that amount is being brought forward into 2025.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Krista. Counsel, any questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the proposed amending bylaws that align our OCP with the and zoning bylaws to the housing needs report. And the motion on the floor is I'm going to modify the motion on the floor with counsel's head nod on this one. We're not actually approving this tonight. We are receiving it. And if you'll notice, the third motion or this third resolution in here talks about oh, sorry, I was thinking about something else. My apologies, counsel. I got ahead of myself on the fire, on the fire thing. Recent conversation with Will and it's stuck in my head. So the motion on the floor is that council approved first reading of bylaw 2793, which is the the OCP bylaw. So there are three of them in here, the OCP, the zoning bylaw, two and two zoning bylaws. So 2016 and 1850. So we'll go with these three that are one at a time, and the motion on the floor is to approve first for the OCP. Counselor McBane moves and Counselor McGuire seconds. All right. This was a pretty extensive report, and I'm going to assume that all of council has read through this. So I'm not going to ask you to go into excruciating detail on any of this, Justin, but be prepared for questions or comments as as we're going through. So counsel. Questions or comments? Yeah, go go ahead, Counselor Karen.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your work on this, Justin, and I'm I'm strongly in support of the updates you proposed and I'll just I'll make a couple of comments in support. You know, the the affordable housing piece, we're in critical need of affordable housing for people who have an average income or less, and your report is consistent with this, the CMHC definition of affordability is based on 33% of gross median household income. And to quote directly from the report, it's more likely that above-average-income households will benefit from that CMHC affordable housing development. And that is the affordable housing that we have as part of our our new building. The three units at Harvest Apartments, we need homes for people working in childcare, nonprofits, social enterprise restaurants and other and other tourism services and healthcare, as well as seniors and families with young children and single parents and people have been getting pushed for years, pushed out of our community for years. And it is, the problem is getting worse. Say I'm working full-time at, say, $27 an hour than 20 at that affordable rent, 33%, that would be around $1,500 a month, and we don't tend to have that in our community. So, you know, strongly in support of of the work that we can do to incentivize and set ourselves up for that type of development. I'm going to make a comment about, oh, the, it's nice to see the wildfire DPA under further development and that focus, you know, is on fire smart, and that's fantastic. And I'd also like to see land use planning and development that explicitly provides for formalized egress to evacuate residents in case of emergency. And and then another item beyond the scope of this OCP update is, but is related to housing is the collection of compensation from development for public services and infrastructure. And, you know, we learned at UBCM about movement to reduce DCCs and the federal government planning to compensate for shortfall, and if we aren't collecting DCCs, we won't be compensated. So I think it's, you know, it's critical, and I'd really like on a future agenda to have a an update on where we're at in terms of moving this piece forward. Is it on our work plan? Where are we at? So that's my comments for just now. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thanks, Counselor Karen. Counselor Dunneback, go ahead.
I got a question on the the units needed by 2026. That's 544 units. With you guys said approximation of three people per unit. Is that sort of the calculation?
It's 2.2, I think.
2.2, okay, two. Where are the jobs coming for these people to 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 need the housing? Are they going to be, are they going to be here working or like, are they? I just don't understand where the number comes from. For needing that many houses, are there that many people here that aren't like have jobs here? Like, I don't see where another 1,100 jobs are coming from for that number in by 2026?
Yeah, I think the numbers there you're referencing, there's so there's five-year, 10-year, and 20-year
Yeah.
housing needs targets, if you will. And those aren't, those are part of the interim housing needs report that was reviewed and approved by council in December. And based on the the methodology for determining those housing needs set out by the province. So it's it's a, it's a calculation of projected population growth and and, you know, some forecasting of you know, additional housing supply that's that's going to be anticipated. So there's no housing needs doesn't touch on, you know, where exactly those people will be working or what what exactly the makeup is there, but but those are the the housing, the projected housing needs for for Kimberly based on the provincial methodology.
Yeah, I think I think that methodology relies heavily on trend over a fairly long period, not a couple of years, but a trend over, say, 10 or 15 years.
And just one last question. What kind of number the states call that was, say, it was 500 units? What does that generate in a tax base to give back to the community, like if we're building complexes and stuff like that? For mass develop, because I would think that that's pretty massive development for for Kimberly since I've lived here to see 500 units in in a year?
Yeah, so we don't have a number for that. I guess it's all it's all going to depend on just what, you know, what the makeup and typology of those units are, what what kind of projects, what kind of developments are that? And, you know, hopefully, it's a, it's a diverse mix of of new units. Some being, you know, larger multi-unit residential projects, but smaller units is, or, you know, smaller projects, smaller units, or you know, a variety of unit sizes, I guess, in in kind of small projects, medium-sized projects, and large-scale projects. So really, really hard to kind of put a, put a number to that, I guess, but and I just wanted to clarify as well, the that five-year target. So 2022 is sort of year one of that five-year target, and so we we've already, you know, been able to look back and see how many units have been approved since then. So and I think that the number that's in the report, I think, is 370 units have have been approved in the first few years of that that first five-year target. So we are making pretty decent progress, but as as we point out in there, you know, there's there's certain types and sizes of units, stuff that that we're not seeing addressed in in those new proposals at this time. So that's part of, part of the new policy and regulation that we're trying to ensure that we can attract those other units.
Yeah, and just one further, just one comment is like, I worry about overloaded staff and the quality. I'd rather have quality over quantity any day so that we're not coming back to the table. So I'm sorry about you guys getting overloaded with work as well and quality control as well. So thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Dunneback. Further. I have a couple of things. First of all, I think, you know, 90% of what's in here was a really, really nice piece of work, and I only have kind of questions or am questioning a couple of different pieces. And those would kind of under the category of what I I think I would define as kind of anticipating issues in the future, which tend to become self-fulfilling prophecies if we if we if we allow that to happen. And my big concern is that council is being removed from the decision process on kind of these two, these two areas. And the first one has to do with the prioritizing the housing, city lots and housing for affordable and social housing, however broadly we we define that. We have managed to identify city lands for social housing without much difficulty at all. I mean, the Knight Avenue lots are the the most recent of that. I don't think there's been any contention around the council table, and if we take a look at what the volumes are expected over that period of time, it's well within our purview to be able to manage our way through that without having to have a policy change that is going to guess where we may or may not be in the future. I think I think we need to be careful about how how big we we make future problems. And I think it's much better for us to deal with those as as we come. And of course, when policy is changed, if if it's not to solve kind of an existing long-term problem, it ends up encumbering future councils that may run into something completely different than what it is we're dealing with today. So I think we need to be really careful with defining policy without, you know, I mean, the crystal balls just aren't, just aren't that clear. The second, the second kind of issue I have is with the is with the group homes. Again, if we take a look at if we take a look at what our experience is with candidates for for group homes, that number as well is relatively small. And to bring in a solution that basically allows group homes to be to be built anywhere in, you know, the majority of residential areas around town. Again, I think it removes council from the decision process and the consideration that may need to be brought to bear for decisions like that. So and that's not in any way to minimize what the requirement is. But it's to have a pragmatic approach forward that doesn't encumber us for things that may or may not come come to pass. And I guess if we look at affordable housing in particular, however, you've defined affordable in here actually quite nicely, that table that talked about the the different stratas, I thought that was was very, very useful. The solution to kind of that lower-end income is subsidies, and those subsidies are the domain of the province, not the domain of of the municipality. And on the social housing side of things, as I mentioned a moment ago, I think we've been really strong on social housing. In addition to Knighton, the society that has been dealing with most of our social housing has two or two and a half acres that are currently available up on Church Street for another development that would chew up a huge number of pardon me, of those required doors over the next five or or 10-year period. So, you know, and we've also been successful with with group homes being built here. CMHA, for example, have the special needs, arguably is a special needs home up on Tadak. It's not like we don't have a history of being successful with dealing with these issues. And so on these two in particular, I think changing policy long-term, I think, is overkill for what we want to do, and I really don't want to see council taken out of the decision-making process, which is essentially what will happen with those with those policy changes. So Counselor Fox first, then Counselor McBane.
I just want to speak to the group home comment. It's really hard to get a group home built because whoever they're building the group home for the funders, say, they're going to have a whole bunch of parameters and stuff that's in place that has nothing to do with a zoning bylaw. So it's removing a very small barrier for an organization that realistically, a lot of them aren't going to look at Kimberly in the first place because they're going to want to see a certain amount of transit and services and things that we just don't have. I think that I don't think it's problematic to have it written in that you can put them in any neighborhood, and I think anyone that's terrified that there's going to be a group home, you know, down the street from their fancy mansion can probably just rest easy because it's just probably not going to happen. So.
Yeah, no, fair comment. Thank you, Counselor Fox. I guess I don't disagree at all. In fact, I totally agree with that. The problem with in in casing it in policy is that we, again, don't have a crystal ball that's that clear, and if an oddball thing does come up, I think we want a council to be able to have the have the option of being able to deal with it. Anyway, appreciate, appreciate your comment. Counselor McBane.
Yeah, I I tend to agree with with you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I prefer to have a little bit more flexibility, and I think the only thing I would would mention, though, is, you know, we both, we talked about the the level of potential infrequency that group homes happen. I and we don't have a crystal ball. You're exactly right. I do believe, though, that the potential for you know, group homes and obviously the need for social housing, that that frequency could actually increase from what we've seen in the past. But yeah, I tend to agree with you. I'd rather see, I'd rather see that flexibility when it comes to to group homes and things of that nature.
Thank you. Counselor Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. I I think in terms of the the group homes that, you know, policy, well, in in either case, also with the the city lands for for housing, this is policy that strengthens information out to the community and to to developers, and it, you know, provides information and guidance. I don't think it's limiting or restrains differences, you know, that can be made over time. We can, we could change that over time, and we can also make decisions that aren't necessarily aligned with that policy, right? It's not, it's not a restriction, it's not a regulation. And then, you know, in terms of, so it just, it strengthens the information base that that we have and who we are as a community. And also in terms of looking at policy for city lands for housing and, say, other public benefit, that, again, is is good information that comes forward. So it doesn't just leave it to kind of the heat of the moment in terms of how those decisions get made. And sometimes, you know, it can happen quickly and based on who's at the table at the time. I I think it's really helpful to to have strong policy around these pieces and then other, you know, it informs the decision-making that as it moves forward. And then, you know, as far as city lands go, it is the way that we get to shape the future and and provide clear, you know, direction and actually put us in a better position for negotiating with free-market developers when we actually have a city land to to work with. So I think it's, you know, we we really need to take care and how we use it. In terms of the group home piece and housing, say, for victims of domestic violence, that's you can't have that going through a zoning amendment. It's really important that there be strict confidentiality around that, and and so, I mean, it would just not happen. Right? So I think there are reasons to have this type of policy.
Thanks, Counselor. Last, any further comments? You guys got lots of feedback. Awesome. So we'll call the question on first reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Look forward to when when would you expect second reading to come in? Next meeting?
Yes, yes, our intention would be to have a second reading back at at the next meeting, yes.
Right, okay, cool. Thanks, Justin.
Sorry, if I if I just may clarify, so is there a a motion on the table then to put forward those amendments to the the bylaw? I just
The first reading?
The first reading, yeah.
Yep, I think I think right now that feedback is for your consideration and to be able to kind of adjust as you see fit.
Okay.
There's one other thing that I wanted to make council aware of. You haven't seen this yet because it's not, hasn't been. Nothing is there to be seen yet, but the regional district about, I guess this is the third year now where the regional district has provided the city of Cranbrook with $80,000 per year to to fund the social services coordinator that was hired a couple of years ago. It came out of a special fund, a special housing fund that the regional district had. That is now being emptied as of this last tranche this year. And the conversation around the regional district board has been to bring in some permanence in the form of tax increases across the board, not just for the rural areas, but the municipalities as well, increasing their contribution on the on the amount that that we pay to pay to the regional district on an annual basis. We haven't seen any of this yet because the staff report with recommendations and all the work hasn't been done yet. But Kimberly, it clearly will be one of the communities that will be permanently providing money to the city of Cranbrook to be able to deal with a lot of the social issues that come with their having social services. The comment earlier, I think that Counselor Fox made, we don't have the services, nor will we, are we ever to likely have them with Cranbrook 30 kilometers away. And transportation is an issue. And all of these factors together mean that Cranbrook is going to be the center for for these services. And every municipality in the East Cootenies is going to be contributing money to Cranbrook to be able to deal with all of that. So stay tuned. We likely aren't going to see anything on this until the new year, but but it is coming. Okay, next up. Next up is the UBCM volunteer and composite and composite fire department. Oh, we have the second, two more resolutions, sorry on that. We've only dealt with the OCP. Next up, we have approval of first reading for the resort zoning bylaw 2016. Mover, please. Counselor McGuire, thank you. Counselor Karens, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. And finally, the council approved first reading of bylaw 2795, which is the Kimberly zoning bylaw 1850. Mover. Counselor McBane, thank you. Counselor Fox seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Thanks, Maurice. Apologize, counsel. So next up, we have the UBCM volunteer and composite fire department equipment and training grant application. Is there an acronym for that, Pam? It would be helpful. And the motion on the floor is that council direct staff to apply to UBCM Community Emergency Preparedness Fund to fund the department's equipment and training grant program or to the grant program for a maximum of $30,000 to help fund the 32,300 required to purchase structural fire protection equipment to support wildland and urban interface fires. And further, the council confirm its support for the purchase of structural fire protection equipment and commit the city to providing overall grant management and supporting and supporting any project cost overruns. We have one more that we'll do secondarily. Mover for those two, please. Counselor McBane and Counselor Dunneback seconds. All right. Pam or Will, which of you will take this?
Assistant Fire Chief Knight is here to talk to the program.
Sorry, Trevor. Your name, your name was on that report. Take it away.
Yeah, so the grant, we're looking to use to buy a couple of wildland pumps and the equipment that's needed to run those pumps so that we can better access water and get water up hills in this community.
Simple as that?
Simple as that.
$30,000?
Two pumps, two bladders, two suction hoses, yeah.
Yeah, awesome. I, it's really unfortunate that the the RDK, the RDK vote didn't go through in support of us providing fire protection because that RDK would have paid for all of this equipment and then some, but it is what it is. Okay, counsel, any questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Dunneback.
Will these pumps be mobile by themselves, or are they going to be like, we pack them down to the water tip thing? Are they going to be on trailers like?
These are small 50-pound pumps that a paraffiner can carry and set up remotely.
Awesome. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And finally, on this item, that if the application is approved, council direct staff to include the expenditure of 32,300 in year one of the 26 to 2030 financial plan. And that the $2,300 incremental, $2,300 be funded from the general operating capital reserve. Counselor McBane moves and Counselor McGuire seconds. Comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the indigenous liaison position agreement. And the motion on the floor is that council authorize mayor and CAO to execute the indigenous engagement position agreement with the regional district. Mover, please. Counselor Karen, thank you. And Counselor McGuire, seconds. Discussion. Who's going to speak to this?
I'm just going to confuse everybody with the seat change, watching on, watching online. So the background on the part is that the BC government has funded the municipality to consult with indigenous governing bodies and a part of this program through the East Cootenie Emergency Management Program. We've looked at like, how do we get this so we don't overwhelm our partners? And what we've come up with is a position that will be funded by all of the East Cootenie Emergency Program members that can actually collaborate with with the comm, with tobacco planes, with the shoe swap band, everybody that's in our area and not overwhelm them. The the position that's been created as well, too, will work within the EOC and support that as well, too. So there is a little bit of overlap with emergency management. And all this, all this position will be doing, too, as well, is working under the four phases of emergency management. So it is that mitigation, the response, the recovery piece of it as well, too. So we've we've identified that this is probably the best opportunity Kimberly and our partners have to to collaborate. uh to collaborate and uh and work together on this with our, with our indigenous uh governing body partners.
All right, and and if I read this correctly, the cost of doing this is coming from the province.
Correct.
Not from our
Yeah, it is filed through us to the uh regional district, I believe is uh brought to the board as well previously.
Okay, counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, next up is the financial update report for the first nine months of twenty twenty-five. Motion on the floor is that we receive uh for information, the financial report. Counselor Cairns moves. Counselor McBain seconds. Krista.
Thank you, Mayor McCormick.
Yeah, so I know, I know the report uh kind of in the uh in the columns has a, has a variance column. Uh the problem is the variance is kind of hard to read uh because it's a twelve month um, you know, spending allocation and it can be really low or really high and it's hard to understand. So my question would be, are there any specific variances in there that we need to pay attention to that are going to be, you know, off-center one way or the other?
Okay, that that's a great question. Thank you, Mayor McCormick. Um on the operating side, everything seems to be fairly in line with what we would expect to see at this time of year. Um if we look at the capital side and the percentages, um we see that it's showing nineteen point five percent of spending. If we take the wa- wastewater treatment plant project out, out of that amount, um we're looking more at fifty percent. And there's some lag behind for invoicing for um projects that have been ongoing through the summer. So we'll see that creep up over the next quarter as well. Um and then on the non-capital side, we are low there as well, but we've um staff and managers here have put in comments um specific for each project as to their status to indicate where they're at 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 this stage of the year.
Yeah, thank you. So um I think um, you know, obviously the ones that um where the spending is and invoicing hasn't happened yet, I'm looking at the items that are complete and um the vast majority of these have come in well under budget. That that really jumped off the page. Um care to comment? Um either yourself or uh or Nick? Who's doing the awesome job?
Well, thanks, Mayor McCormick. Uh that that is a a good point that you raised there and and it's also contributing to the, what Krista was mentioning there before on percent spent to date. So I I I attribute this to the the job that our engineering group and our our managers are are doing, trying to get the 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 best information available and and uh and and putting proper contingencies in place for these projects so that when we're, when we're executing them, that we're not seeing them creep over budget.
Um I think we go back to the um kind of the heart of COVID and the uh rapid inflation that we were getting where it seemed that, you know, every project needed extra money allocated to it. We haven't had that in a long time.
There was, yeah, a few years there where we saw dramatic increases in our budgets and so it was pretty awesome.
Counselor McBain.
My only caution is is um on our budgets now, let's not rebound back downwards and and get below them like staying high on the budgets is fine with me. I'm surprised nobody jumped at that one too and you get that uh pointing that out, but uh anyway, that at just commenting on this, but yeah, the I I agree, I looked at that and it was, it was really cool to see a whole bunch of completes and uh and two-digit uh integers in there, so thank you.
Yeah, awesome. Further, counsel? Okay, uh call the question, all those in favor of receipt? Um any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have the procurement report for the same period. Um actually, sorry, for the last quarter, uh not for the year-to-date, January first to September or uh July first to September thirtieth. Motion on the floor is that council receive the information. Counselor McBain, thank you. And Counselor McGuire, seconds. Who's gonna speak to this one? There, there may not be that much to speak to. I think it's fairly, fairly self-explanatory, but uh go ahead.
Sure. Yes, um it's a smaller procurement report for this quarter. Um we saw a lot of more of the activity in the previous quarter as far as executing contracts. However, you will see the largest one there um being the wastewater treatment plant integrated project delivery contract at the eighty-six million.
I I take it that's not a cash outlay?
That is correct.
Thank you. Counselor McBain.
Uh just a question, I guess, for Nick. Is that, is that rubber surface gonna get put in here this year before the snow or are they gonna wait till the spring?
As of right now, it's not looking like it's gonna be completed due to, due to weather constraints and we're, we're working through that to see what we can do.
I I wasn't that concerned. I wasn't planning on running down there and playing on the thing, but I I walk by it every day, so I just, yeah. But anyway, yeah, thanks for that.
Will the fencing stay up over the winter?
That, we're trying to work through the details of that, that that fencing was donated rental, so we're, we're trying to figure out a solution on that, but yeah.
Yeah.
We'll need some protection in place to keep the people out of there.
Right, okay. Good luck with all that.
Thank you.
All right, um did call the question on that last one? Of the procurement, call the question on receipt of the procurement report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, next up, we have the July Fest twenty twenty-five events from Myrtle Mountain Grant Request. Motion on the floor is that council direct staff to allocate nine thousand forty-three dollars and three cents of unused long-term grant funds originally designated for the Chamber of Commerce for July Fest uh to uh to go to events to the other group. Uh Counselor McGuire moves. Counselor McBain seconds. Uh discussion, Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh this was a request that came from the new organizers of July Fest Events for Myrtle Mountain to help cover um basically the city's bill that we've uh charged for goods and services that we provided to them during July Fest. Um this was originally a grant that was given or designated or allocated, sorry, to the Kimberly District Chamber of Commerce for July Fest every year. Um it used to be provided to them in um in-kind support. It's now ASH or it has been in in twenty twenty-four. So late in twenty twenty-four, uh the chamber decided not to offer July Fest anymore and this group took it over. So in between us revising the long-term grants policy and this group requesting these funds be um allocated to them and in conjunction with them receiving their not-for-profit or charity status, um our long-term grant policy no longer lists July Fest or the Chamber of Commerce or this group as one of the recipients of the a standing grant. So the funding is, is, has been allocated to July Fest. It is still in budget. Um if council does allocate this funding to this group, it will be outside that policy and going forward, we will encourage them to apply for the community grants, project and event grants that are due uh November fourteenth. Um so essentially, um if we allow them this grant, then they'll retain their full uh revenue from the twenty twenty-five event of about seventeen thousand dollars and they'll be utilizing that funding to help kickstart the twenty twenty-six event, which they're committed to to running and I think they had a great event. They did a really good job in twenty twenty-five. I think they had some struggles. Coming out with seventeen thousand dollars is incredible. Um, you know, if they have the opportunity to be able to utilize that for next year, I think that gives them a leg up and it's a good thing.
Excellent. Thanks, Pam. Counsel. Go ahead, Counselor McBain.
Yeah, I think um I think in terms of how the long-term grants are, the all this new processes that we're going through, I think that the timing, um yeah, it wasn't great, but um I I just look at what um what July Fest does beyond um the event itself and just how many people it brings into town and how much money gets uh spread around the other businesses in town, so um and also giving that we, you know, we are, we'd earmarked um money to go basically to the same thing, just through it to a different group before, gives me less consternation about it. So I think it's more of a timing thing really than any, anything, but uh, yeah, I I support it. I I I applaud this group for for taking it over on relatively short notice because it's a pretty big, uh pretty big job.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Fox.
Okay, just to confirm, the bylaw as it's written says they have to be a registered nonprofit for, is it one year or two years?
It says one year.
It says one year. So they don't meet our eligibility criteria technically.
Outside of the policy.
Yeah, okay. Um and we had the money earmarked, but it was earmarked specifically to the chamber, right?
For July Fest.
For July Fest, okay. Um so my problem with this one is just that, and I get that it's like they stepped up to run this event that everyone really likes and that there's all these benefits and da-da-da. They also, from what I can tell, ran a super successful event because I've heard mixed reviews of lower amounts that previous July Fests profited out of. Um they did a really good job from what I understand. I don't have a problem with us funding it. I just would rather that they're in this, they meet the criteria they're supposed to if we're doing that. That's where I have a problem with it, so, no.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Uh I love the fact that local people uh took this upon themselves. Uh event planning is, uh there's been very, a ton of angles. And I'm so hundred percent in support of it, even though I've been to uh July Fest in quite a while. It's a lot of fun. One of my first super fun memories of Kimberly, actually. But I wonder if we retain this money as sort of a carrot for them rather than giving them the money right now and going, here you go. Um sort of be, keep your money that you made from your profit this year in your bank account and hopefully leverage that properly. Um and if you pull off another, if you plan to do it next year, you'll have the opportunity to earn this so that rent next year is paid for if they pull the job off. Carrot kind of idea?
The issue with that is there is an outstanding City of Kimberly bill for nine thousand dollars.
Oh, they haven't paid that yet. Oh, that's the first thing you're supposed to pay, is your bills before you figure out what your profit is.
So essentially, if we do um allocate this money, it's just a a transfer to to offset their bill.
And come up with eight thousand dollars.
If they pay us the bill, if out of the seventeen thousand dollars, they'll have eight grand left to go towards next year.
Go ahead, Counselor McGuire.
Yeah, I think we're outside of the grant policy at this point regardless. Um and the, the money's in the budget. We're talking about nine thousand dollars here. Um and it's a community group of people who have stepped up to run this group event. Um the chamber had money in the bank to put towards this project in the past, as in they had a contingency that they could pull funds from. My understanding is there is money coming out of the pockets of directors to put cash down towards this event. I don't think that's acceptable for a nonprofit. Um I'm fully in support of just giving them nine thousand dollars this year. And hopefully, they won't even need to come back for additional funds next year because based on the weather and uh the difficulty of running an event the first time, my guess is next year will be even more successful. Um but again, you know, having the capital to, you know, buy the supplies needed for the event uh seems like a good idea, so I'm, I'm fully support. I don't see any, any reason to argue over nine thousand dollars here.
Thank you, Counselor McGuire. Further? Um just two things. Um I don't think they took over this thing within uh with less than a year to go. Um it was really, really last minute that they took it on. And I agree, we're outside the, you know, the realm of the the grant policy anyway. And more importantly, um that standing grant is not available for next year. It's sunset. And they, if they wish to get grant money, you're gonna have to apply for it through the community grants program, which council will then have the decision or the opportunity to say uh yea or nay. So I I too am in support of this. Last comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Fox is opposed. Motion is carried. Um the second, uh second motion relating to that item is that council acknowledged the transition of July Fest Event Management to Events from Myrtle Mountain Society and direct staff to advise the organization to apply for the community grants uh program uh in accordance with our grants policy. Counselor McBain moves and Counselor Karen seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, council remuneration. The motion on the floor is that council receive for information the report uh entitled Council Remuneration from the Corporate Officer. Mover please. Counselor Fox moves and Counselor McBain seconds. All right, discussion. So before um kind of you uh say anything about the report, Maurice, I just want to make a comment about this whole process. Uh this probably across the entire province, every municipality in the province is the most difficult issue uh that they deal with. I mean, how many people uh in your professional lives are tasked with giving yourself a raise? I mean, it just honestly, I find it um disheartening that the province doesn't have a policy uh that can be applied around this with parameters that allow us to kind of plug in and fit where we are, but they don't. And uh this is on us to review from time to time and uh time to time is now. So unfair as it really is, uh we gotta have the conversation. Counselor McBain.
Yeah, I I think um, yeah, I I think you're you're spot on, Mr. Mayor. It is, it's something nobody wants to bring up as as a local politician because nobody wants to give some kind of uh impression that uh you know, you're, you're in this job for the money and and I don't think anybody around this table is in the, in this job for the money. Um but I do think it is important to to do these periodic reviews and I do think it's um I do, I do believe, this is a personal belief of mine that um, you know, you look at all the comparables that are in there and and the amount of work that um, you know, I'll, I'll especially say that the, the mayor's put in. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, these, these amounts are are not large amounts and and the, the concern that I have, especially at the local level is um, you know, it's almost a deterrent for, for um, for younger folks. Um or um, you know, people who aren't, you know, is, you know, uh financially well off to to get into uh municipal politics given the time constraints that that it, that it um involves. And um, yeah, it's, 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 so it's, I I'm glad that we're, we're taking a look at it. I I um, I think it's, uh I I do think it's important and I do think that just in general, um most rural uh local uh mayors especially, um just with the amount of time that they put in, I I I think uh it's high time for the the province to uh you know, take a look at it a little bit and and understand that the the pressure that it puts under uh local governments to essentially figure out how to, how to pay themselves um in a, in a fair way. So um, yeah, anyway, I'm, I think.
Thanks for the, thanks, thanks for the comments. Anybody else? So for a little bit of context, I guess, um so I served as a counselor for one term. Um I had a job, really wasn't worried too much uh about income and felt that kind of for the time that I put in, the number of hours that I was putting in, that, you know, what I was getting, yeah, as a counselor, as a part-time position was uh was fair. Um in twenty fifteen, when I was elected mayor, um I had to, had, I made the decision, I had to, I made the decision to uh quit everything that I had in play from an income point of view and focus on this as a, as a full-time job. That was a call that I made. Uh clearly, there was, I knew what I was, what I was gonna be paid. Uh that's just what I felt I needed to do in order to um, you know, achieve the goals and, you know, contribute in some way to moving the community forward. I kept that full-time, that full-time trust in the job for almost the, the first two terms, certainly for a term and a half uh at a minimum. And um the reason, one of the big reasons and one of the big things that I filled that void with was uh economic development. I mean, we ended up kind of toward the end of my first term, I guess it was, with um uh a decision to reallocate money that was being put into uh economic development over to planning and development. Uh we were starting to see a big rise in uh the building permit requests and some of the larger building, residential building that was happening. And I think if I remember correctly, at the time, Troy, there was you and 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 a part-time planner and one building inspector. And I think if I remember correctly, at the time, Troy, there was you and 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 a part time planner and one building inspector. Going back to the to the twenty fifteen. And with the reallocation of that money, we have three three planners. And two building inspectors, which has been required in order for us to deal with the now thirty to fifty million dollars a year in building permits that that we have. So there was a void there and I just stepped in to fill the void and that chewed up, believe me. A ton, an absolute ton of time, still does, quite frankly. I guess. You know, from a comparison point of view, so so I, my belief is, and I remember saying this. Kind of halfway through my first term, that six months before. Six months before I'm done. I I would like to bring a motion forward to alter the, at a minimum, the mayor's remuneration. But also do the the counsel. So here we are. Maurice has taken the initiative to initiate this review. Which I think we, I think we all clearly appreciate. I would suggest that in order for to open up candidates. That require more money to spend more time, just from an overall, as Counselor McBane had been talking about. The mayor's position warrants at a minimum of fifty thousand dollar a year stipend. Not that much higher than kind of what the average or the median is in here. But at fifty thousand dollars, you will, you will undoubtedly get some individuals that at thirty five thousand dollars would not. Make the decision to step up and. And spend the time and and effort necessary to to be in the position. Now, from a comparison point of view, I would also, Maurice, suggest that. That the comparisons, population is one metric. There are other metrics and for us. The other resort municipalities, we're kind of in that club together. And while the populations vary. A little bit within the resort municipalities, I think we have more in common with not just the tourism side of it, but also the. All of the other pieces to do with infrastructure and, you know, just all of those things. And I think it would be useful to add the resort municipalities to the to the equation. And I mean, we can look at other variables, but, you know, I mean, at at the end of the day. We don't have to make this very complicated. The regional district is undergoing a remuneration review right now. And they in fact are putting a panel in place. Of, you know, previous directors, previous C O's, basically. Subject matter knowledgeable people. But it's a process and it takes time. And as was mentioned in the report. You know, this is not all that complicated. I'm not sure that we need to do that, quite frankly. Not dissimilar to the nine thousand dollar thing, you know, how much time is appropriate to put into it. So so anyway, yeah, that's what the R D is doing. It's going to take them a few months before they they come up with where that's going to be. But. Yeah, that's their model. Anyway, those would be my comments. Yeah.
So I think the main reason for the report tonight was actually to determine if the exercise was going to be done by. A task force, staff or a consultant. I think that. Like. Definitely staff cannot undertake that without needing a consultant. There is some value in having a task force, but on the other hand, it's going to mean more time for staff to actually. Coordinate.
Yeah, just in response to that, I think a task force, you know, if there was a lot of scrutiny around. This being an issue for raising rates a little bit, I I would, I would support a task force. But in this case, I don't. You know, the sense that I get from anybody that's ever talked about mayor or council positions is that. Nobody's, nobody thinks we're getting overpaid. So I don't, I don't think that, you know, upping the rates by a couple thousand dollars to be to come more in in line with other communities is gonna. Bring a lot of heat, especially since we're doing it at the end of a term.
Yeah, it's for the next term.
Yeah, exactly. This isn't for us. This is, this will be effective for the next council. And if somebody has an issue with that, then they can just vote us out.
Thank you, Counselor McGuire. Counselor Karens, go ahead.
I'm just thinking it would be nice to see the stipend for the regional district rep included on here too.
We can't. So because it's not, we're not the one that decide what's the stipend. And it's basically the representative to the regional district. That actually gets the stipend. And historically, it's the mayor. So that's. If there was for any reason, if the. A new mayor would work full time and could not attend the regional district, then there would be kind of a recommendation for counsel to appoint the representative.
I guess just some kind of indication that. There, you know, there is an additional amount. That, you know, does supplement that mayor salary. Or attending the regional district, but I don't know, maybe as a footnote or something like that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, fair enough, Counselor Karens. I think the what they come up with, the the stipends. For the regional district are based on the the numbers of hours and things that have to be put in for regional district business. And they're really completely independent of kind of the work that's done at the City of Kimberley. Go ahead, Counselor McBane.
Yeah, I guess my comment would just kind of be echoing Woody's sentiments with respect to the administration or just the. Kind of figuring out what the numbers would be. I have I have full confidence that. Is with staff, as long as it doesn't eat up too much of their time and it doesn't sound like it would compared to going on and. Doing the task force, I don't think anybody, at least. Around the table here would have too much consternation with whatever staff comes up with. I I don't think we need to go much. Further and above and beyond that. That's my feeling.
Do you need anything else?
One question is that would you like the task force to be incorporated and get a next review? So basically. At the end of the term that there would be a task force in place. Some, some of these municipalities that have had task force, they basically have the terms of reference for it in their bylaw.
I think, you know, there was already comments at this meeting today just about creating policy around issues that don't exist yet. So I don't think that that's something that we need to get ahead of at this point. If it becomes an issue in the future. I think a future council could put that in place. But it feels to me like, you know, if we don't need a task force now. And now we're, you know, putting in place policy to force future council to have a task force. I don't, I don't think that's required. Or are you just suggesting that? We put terms in place. And then the next council is still able to decide whether they need it? I I'm just not clear on what you're asking, I guess.
If we incorporate it in the bylaw. Council, we need to change the bylaw before they can say, you know, task force. So I agree with your.
Yeah, I think we just leave it for now. And if it becomes an issue in the future where there is more, you know. Scrutiny around these decisions because of some sort of, you know. Malicious thing happening at another council table or for whatever reason it becomes an issue, I think we could look at it then.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor. You have what you need? Okay, so call the question on receipt. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And the next resolution associated with that is that counsel direct staff to bring forward amendments to the City of Kimberley Remuneration and Expense By Law. For counsel consideration. Counselor McBane moves and Counselor Karen seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, we have two items of correspondence. Move receipt. Counselor McBane, thank you. Counselor Fox seconds. We have an action item and that is the. Letter of support being requested by the Nature Park Society. So let's put a motion on the floor. The counsel received the letter from John Henley. Oh, we've already done that. The counsel direct staff to prepare a letter of support as identified. Counselor McBane, thank you. Counselor Dunneback seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. And any comments on the second item? All right, hearing none. Call the question on receipt of correspondence. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right. You have, you have a counselor item. Go ahead, Counselor Karens.
Thanks, Woody. I attended a tour this morning with our fire chief. Will Booth and the Friends of Lowes Creek, Canfor, U C W S, on planning for harvesting and wildfire risk reduction in Lowes Creek. And it was very educational and great to have a broad representation of of experts. And Akam and Tanaka are also collaborating, but unfortunately weren't able to make it today. But they're involved deeply on an ongoing basis. And wanted to mention that for those who are interested in what's happening, I'd recommend joining the Friends of Lowes Creek and. There will be a bit of a presentation at their A G M on Wednesday evening. And I attended the Kimberley Nordic Club A G M and, you know, folks may know, but it's. The second largest Nordic Nordic club in B C. So Prince George is the only one in B C that has more members. So we're up over nineteen hundred members and. An amazing hundred and twenty five kids in the Jack Rabbits program and around thirty five in track attack and. Strong programs for getting kids and families onto the snow who wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity. So really impressive work underway and. They're saving up to buy new grooming equipment. And then I did attend the city open house on the ice facility strategy and wastewater treatment plant. And it was, it was busy. Yeah, it was, it was great to see so many people out there making, learning and making input. And I heard from many about the priority of ice facilities and also that more gym spaces needed for racket sports and. That spaces needed for the library as well. And that's, that's all. I did hear actually the fire stopping event on October twenty second was really good. Too. I heard it was a great event. So thanks to Andy Christie and the sponsors for that one as well.
Awesome. Is he a couple of weeks? Yeah, yeah, all at one time. Yeah, cool. Thanks for that, Counselor Karens. Anybody else? So I just want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for the awards. Event that happened on Friday night. It was, it was awesome. Andrew Wilson, as I think most of you know, is going to be leaving the chamber here in November the seventh is his last day. And so this kind of was his bon voyage event and he did an awesome job. It was, everybody had a really good time and it was just nice to have everybody mingling and celebrating successes over the past year. And I just got back from Toronto on Tuesday, so that's, that's it for me. Okay, as I mentioned at the outset, we have a. Seven items on the in camera tonight. That probably sets a record, I think, Maurice. Have you been? Porting these, waiting for World Series Baseball Night to have this or what? Okay, I, could I have a mover to moving camera, please? Counselor McGuire moves and Counselor Karen seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we'll take, we'll take a couple of minutes, short break and then head into it.